I've not watched food. Did you start?
I know, I swear it was like, yeah, probably. You have to suck that ass.
We have it, yeah. Oh, I don't, I don't even wanna know what that just started.
We got two years in the next seventy-two.
Are we ready, Yandra? Good evening, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council to order on Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven thirty P M. And before we have roll call, I just wanted to announce that we just finished a marathon session and much to our delight and pride, we adopted our general plan, our E I R, our housing element, and our development, multi-family development and design standards. And I want to thank our staff and our consultants for helping us get through that and we're really pleased that we were able to accomplish this. So now last for roll call. Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Scazola. Councilmember Furtado.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Present.
Mayor Bybee.
Present. I'd like to invite Bob Sedinsky up to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Bob is our parks supervisor.
Ready, again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bob, if you could just wait there for a minute. The reason that Bob was invited to lead the Pledge of Allegiance is in recognition of Arbor Day, which is coming up in the city. And I wanted to, a visio proclamation proclaiming April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three as Arbor Day in the city of Campbell. And I just wanted to give a little bit of history on it. This is a holiday that was known as Arbor Day. It started in eighteen seventy-two in the state of Nebraska with the planting of more than a million trees. And in addition to the United States, Arbor Day is now observed worldwide. And trees provide vital protection for the earth's topsoil from erosion and oxygen, a place for wildlife to build homes and seek refuge, clean the air, regulate temperatures, and generate oxygen to support all forms of life here on earth. And that's just a few of the whereas's that are issued in this proclamation. But I'd like to thank Bob and the Public Works staff. This is an annual event, and I know that you take pride in it, and we all benefit from the care that you take with our parks. So let me come down and present this to you. And I also have a certificate of appreciation for leading the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. We definitely appreciate all the support from the council. And when I say we, I mean, the Parks Department, myself, and all the citizens. Appreciate all your help.
Bob, I'd just like to thank you for your many years of service to the city of Campbell and hope they continue. And I'd like to thank the members of the Parks staff as well. And I know you always do a lot of very good proactive work throughout the city. And I can remember one time, some time ago, a long time ago, when big storms were planned and the staff was out there cleaning all the storm drains prior to them clogging potentially. And you always have such forward thinking, and the city's much better for all the work you do. Thank you.
Any other council members?
Yeah, excuse me. Thank you very much for everything that you guys have been doing, your whole department and the public works. Let's see Todd over there. I look forward to how many trees are going to be planted next week. Fourteen, alright, yay.
Councilmember Lopez.
Just thank you again for all the hard work and dedication of the city. But I know it's something that's incredibly important to our residents. We have a lot of volunteers that come out and help support these efforts and really appreciate the leadership there.
Councilmember Scazola, any comments?
Yeah, just want to echo the appreciation. And also, I mean, is there anything better than a new tree being planted in Orchard City? I think, you know, I look around, I'm at point of no appearance in the entire city, is all the trees. And I can't wait. I'm also very excited to have those fourteen new trees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elliot. Okay, we're moving on to communications and petitions. We have none tonight. Next item is oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. And I do have two speaker cards tonight. The first is Amy Taylor.
Alright, hi there. I'm Amy Taylor, a Campbell resident and the owner of Cloud City Supply. New topic tonight. This evening, I'm actually here speaking to you as the president of the Downtown Campbell Business Association. I believe the city council and police department are aware of our efforts to hold a car show in downtown on July eighth. And we do appreciate the work that has been done thus far to help us, you know, ensuring that we're following the city processes to get this event approved. But to my understanding, we still do not have a final approval. And we're starting to get to a point where this is hindering our efforts to promote the event and ensure that it's successful. Now, I've been made aware that there's potentially a meeting on Friday to work through some of this and any questions to close this out. But this evening, I'm here to work, you know, to get that confirmation and to understand if there are any additional requirements that the D C B A has not yet met, or if there's any additional documentation that the city and the police department need to fully approve the car show for July eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. As I stated, we were not able to take action on this, but if you leave your contact number, staff will follow up with you. Thank you. Any other oral requests in the council chamber? And let's see if we have anybody online? No. So I'll move on to mayor's announcements. April is National Volunteer Month. Volunteers are one of the city's greatest resources. Many city programs and services are enhanced by community members who volunteer their time and talents on a wide variety of interesting projects throughout city departments, including the museum, theater, and public works. Come enjoy a crisp evening and discover the latest crop of wines from California's wine-growing regions. Campbell's Spring Wine Walk is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, April nineteenth, from six to nine P M. Event and ticket information is available at downtowncampbell.com. Campbell's Wine Walk benefit the Downtown Campbell Business Association to raise money to fund year-round events and activities for the whole community. Saturday, April twenty-second, is Earth Day. This annual event began on April twenty-second, nineteen seventy, to demonstrate support for environmental protection. The official theme for twenty twenty-three is Invest in Our Planet. Consistent with council policy, the water tower will be lit in green and blue on April twenty-second to recognize this event. Please join the city council and staff from nine A M. to noon on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, for a budget study session in the council chambers to discuss the operating budget and capital improvement plans. For the fortieth consecutive year, the National Arbor Day Foundation has proclaimed the city of Campbell Tree City, U S A. And in celebration of this award, the community is invited to participate in an Arbor Day celebration at ten A M. on Friday, April twenty-eighth, on the Rincon side of John D. Morgan Park. Connecting businesses and job seekers. The Campbell Works Job Fair is scheduled for Thursday, May fourth, from ten A M. to two P M. at the Orchard City Banquet Hall located at One West Campbell Avenue. Visit campbellchamber.net for more information. The Campbell Farmers Market is open on most Sundays from nine A M. to one P M. Enjoy a large selection of locally grown, fresh produce, as well as craft vendors, live music, and food boosts. The Mercury News has named the Campbell's Farmers Market the best farmers market in Silicon Valley. Come and enjoy the festive and vibrant community atmosphere that attracts fans from all around. And finally, the city of Campbell offers a wide range of youth, adult, and fifty-plus classes, art classes, including playtime, art journaling, adult pottery wheel, dance, music, special interests, including Play Well Lego camps, adult and youth sports, fitness, and more. Visit the city's website at campbellca.gov to find out more about these classes and camps. Lots of activities over there. So this brings us to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made by a member of the city council, city staff, or a member of the public. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent calendar prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in the order in which it appears. And I want to make one note that there was an amendment to the agenda, item eleven, that was on the consent calendar, was moved to public hearing. So we'll hear that after the consent calendar. And then I believe councilmember Scazola would like to provide a comment on item eight on the consent calendar.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm really excited to see that we're moving forward with these battery backups. With recent storms that have happened, everyone who is in the community knows, but we've had a lot of power outages. And seeing that we're getting these installed and so that our lights are working even during the night.
Thank you, council member. Are there any other council members who wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? Councilmember Lopez?
I don't wish to remove an item, but I just want to say my appreciation for the Joan Evans Bonnet Living Trust for the museum. Really appreciative of the support from our residents.
Great, thank you. I would say the same thing, appreciative of the continued donation. And I do have requests from a member of the public to remove item ten, Steve Saunders. So let's take a motion with the remaining items, and then we'll bring you up, Steve, for your comments. So we would need a motion to approve items two through ten, and, I'm sorry, two through nine and twelve.
So move.
A second to the motion.
We have a.
It's Elliot.
Hi, hello?
Elliot, if we can.
Am I back? Am I back?
Yeah, you're here. Well, hold on just a moment. We have a second, a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by councilmember Furtado to approve the consent calendar, items two through nine and twelve. Now, we have a roll call vote. Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scazola.
Hi.
Councilmember Furtado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Bybee.
Hi.
Steve Saunders, if you'd like to come up. He wants to comment on item ten, which is to approve a consultant services agreement with Mays and Associates for interim finance manager services, dispensed with bidding requirements under section three point two oh, point oh through, three oh, subsection four of the Campbell Municipal Code, C M C, and approve a corresponding budget adjustment.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad I don't have to read that. And council members. We are approaching doing the budget. We still have construction projects to start. We really need coverage in the Finance Department. So I urge you to follow the staff's recommendation and hire people that we've worked with before. Now, as to our current Finance Director. Had a chance to pose very interesting questions to Director Fuentes, and he's always given me very well-thought answers that I learned a lot from. And his work as Finance Director, I'm not sure exactly how that played into the city making it through the financial troubles associated with COVID, but I figure it had something to do with it. I'm really pleased how we did then. And we've had two very successful major O bond issues, which I suspect the Finance Director had something to do with those two. So, thank you, Will. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any other comments? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to.
Could I just? Can I make a comment for our public? I'm not sure if this was cleared by, where Will is not leaving us, which I'm very glad. It's for the finance manager position, although I very much agree with all the comments. We had me panicking for a second, which is why I wanted to say something. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. But we will, we will be losing Norah, and so that will be a loss to our organization. So thank you for your service to our city and our community. And you were gonna make a motion?
Oh, yep. I make a motion that the council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve and execute a consultant services agreement with Mays and Associates for interim finance manager services, dispensed with bidding requirements under section three point two oh, point three, point oh, three oh, subsection four of the Campbell Municipal Code, C M C, and authorize a corresponding budget adjustment. And thank you to Will.
There a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by councilmember Lopez to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call, please. Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scazola.
Hi.
Councilmember Furtado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Bybee.
Hi.
So that takes us to item number eleven on the agenda, which is a live entertainment permit for the cartoon at three hundred Orchard City Drive, Suite one oh one, Campbell. And we have Chief Berg presenting.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. Here to discuss the live entertainment permit for Cartoon Incorporated. And just to give you a little bit of background, in March of two thousand twenty-two, we initially received the live entertainment application. And while processing that application in April of two thousand twenty-two, the planning commission adopted resolution number four six three seven, approving a city-initiated modification to the conditional use permit, an administrative plan development permit to reduce the hours of operation of cartoons based on safety and security concerns that were happening at that time. So back in April of two thousand twenty-two, the live entertainment permit was placed on hold while Cartoon went through that process. The reinstatement of extended hours of operation was approved on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, subject to conditions of approval to ensure the public health, safety, and general welfare. Since that time, the applicant has abided by all the things that were put in place to provide for those safety and security measures. And with this live entertainment application, the applicant requests live entertainment at the business to provide musical entertainment consisting of a disc jockey and/or karaoke performances with no live bands. The application requests authorization for live entertainment Wednesdays through Saturdays from nine P M. to one A M. And as part of the live application permit, a background check of the applicant consisting of fingerprinting was conducted through the Department of Justice. And the Department of Justice responded that there was no information prohibiting the applicant from operating this business with a live entertainment permit. And furthermore, as of the date of the submission, Cartoon Incorporated is a corporation of good standing per the California Secretary of State. As is in the packet, there are a number of conditions that are in the resolution for this live entertainment permit. And I can go through those if you like, or answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions of the chief? Councilmembers Scazola?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? Brandon Brigham is the applicant. I guess he is not here to speak. So with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and/or a motion.
So I would move.
Councilmember Furtado?
I would move the adoption of item number eleven.
Second.
Thank you. Pardon? Oh, there's also a desk item. Can you, it was to add some findings. Right. Yeah, but it needs a motion to include the desk item. Yeah, yeah. So can, will you add that to your, to your motion? Okay, thank you. Thank you. So we have a motion by councilmember Furtado and a second by councilmember Lopez to approve the staff recommendation, including the desk item. Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scazola.
Hi.
Councilmember Furtado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Bybee. Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
So we're on to item thirteen, adoption of new application fees related to the processing of housing development projects to be included in the city's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three schedule of fees and charges. Project file number P. L. N. two thousand and twenty-three dash sixty-two, and we have senior planner Stephen Rose presenting.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm back. So what we have before you is a proposal to establish new fees for housing development projects. Largely, these serve to replace fees which are already charged for these types of projects in our current code, but understandably, just recently, earlier this afternoon, evening, established new permitting processes and procedures. This establishes fees to facilitate the review and application, review of those application types. So if it benefits the council, I do have slides available. I could pull them up, showing what the fees are and how we itemize them. But that really concludes staff's presentation, and staff's recommendation is to adopt the fees as presented.
Thank you, Stephen. Other questions at council?
Actually, if you can display the slides, I'd appreciate it.
So do somebody apologize, given the size, but I can zoom in on a full-size screen here, jumping a little bit ahead. So what you're seeing is we have a new administrative housing development project fee, other administrative housing development project fee for modifications, and minor and major housing development fees for projects of varying size of units, number of units. And we also have a provision allowing for adjustments to the multifamily development design standards, which were recently adopted, where a related permit request could come in with a request of change to those standards under the adjustment provisions contained therein. Separately, as a code update, we talked earlier about a change from our number of units which could qualify for a community benefit overlay from fifty down to twenty-five. What you're seeing here is the fee associated with applying for a community benefit overlay designation of fifty-three thousand dollars, which is the highest of the fees which are here presented. And then we have other fees related to other permit types, like ministerial approvals involved, and as well as our bathroom through application process. If I, one thing I will add is the reason why these are being presented now, as opposed to being presented later in May with the rest of the comprehensive code update, of rest of the fee updates, is because these fees are going to be in effect earlier, and so we needed to have them in place to facilitate the round of applications we're anticipating.
And if they're adopted tonight, will ensure that they get folded into the regular schedule of fees? Any other questions? Councilmember Scuzzola?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll open the public hearing and ask for anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this item. I don't see anyone in the chamber. And I don't see anybody online. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and/or a motion.
I see we all are jumping to our mics here. Okay. With no discussion, I will make a motion that the City Council adopt a resolution establishing new application fees related to the processing of housing development projects to be included in the city's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three schedule of fees and charges.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Lopez to approve the staff recommendation. May we have a roll call? Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scuzzola?
Aye.
Councilmember Fratato?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Aye.
Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
So that brings us to item fourteen, which is the acceptance of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two annual comprehensive financial report and auditor's written communication on internal controls, and our presenter is Finance Manager Norrie Dong. Welcome.
Good evening, council. If I can have just a minute to upload or to show my screen. All right. Good evening, council. As you know, my name is Norrie Van, Finance Manager for the city. This evening, I will be presenting to you item number fourteen, which is the acceptance of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two annual comprehensive financial report, also known as the A. C. F. R. or the A. C. F. R., as well as the auditor's written communication on internal controls. On an annual basis, per the city municipal code, the city is required to have an annual audit conducted on our financial statements by an independent auditor. Our independent auditors are I. Bailey, and here with us today, we have Ahmad, who is the audit partner on the engagement. The audit process includes a review of our internal controls, any policies, procedures, to ensure that we have sufficient processes in place and that internal controls are all adequate and effective. Ultimately, the auditors are looking to ensure that our financial statements are fairly presented at fiscal year end. Before I move on to the results of the audit, I wanted to share some very high-level general fund highlights for fiscal year twenty-two. Our general fund revenues increased by seven point eight million dollars year over year. That seven point eight includes an increase in property tax by one point six million dollars, an increase in sales tax in one point nine, and other taxes also increased by one point five million. Within the other taxes, we have T. O. T., which increased by one point one million dollars year over year. With regards to our expenditures, expenditures increased by two million dollars year over year. There wasn't one specific category that increased a material amount. It's just a matter of smaller expenditure categories that increased incrementally year over year. And as a result, our general fund fund balance increased by one million dollars from fiscal year twenty-one to fiscal year twenty-two. And as we discuss general fund, we typically also like to talk about our reserves. And here on this slide, we have the two main reserves for the general fund. The first one is the economic fluctuation reserve, which we typically use during an economic downturn. Our target for this reserve is sixteen point six seven percent of our general operating expenditures. And so for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, our target is ten million dollars, and we were able to meet that target. So that increased by one million dollars from nine million dollars to ten. The next reserve that we have is our emergency reserve, which is utilized for unexpected physical or fiscal emergency. The target for this reserve is ten percent of general fund revenues. And so for this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two, our target is actually six point one million dollars. And currently, as it stands, the balance for that reserve is three point two. With regards to the audit itself, the city did receive an unmodified clean audit opinion stating that our financial statements are fairly presented for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. However, I do want to mention that we did receive one finding, and that finding is related to adjustments that we made during the course of the audit. The first finding is an adjustment related to a six hundred fifty thousand dollar loan reimbursement that we received from the state C. E. C. Typically, in accounting, when we receive revenues in July or August, we have an accounting process that is an accrual process. And so we try to match that revenue to its expenditures. In this case, staff recorded that revenue into fiscal twenty-one, when it should have been into fiscal twenty-two. And so we made that correction during the course of the audit. And ultimately, that correction did not change or affect our general fund fund balance. It was just a timing correction. The second adjustment that we made was for the allocation of net pension liability in O. K. in which we allocated a portion of net pension liability from the general fund to our motor pool fund as well as our I. T. fund. And this adjustment was made specifically to align with best practices. And again, this adjustment does not affect the general fund fund balance either. Staff presented the audit results and the audit charge written communication to the Finance Subcommittee, which is led by Mayor Bailey, as well as Councilmember Lopez. Within the meeting that we had earlier this month, we reviewed and discussed what processes were being placed to ensure that we prevent future timing corrections. We also discussed the fluctuation in investment earnings and interest on monitoring debt, implementation of a new lease accounting statute that is applicable for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, as well as staff's strategy to replenish the emergency reserve. At the conclusion of the meeting, the committee was satisfied with staff's presentation and answers that were provided, and ultimately, making that needs to be canceled except the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two annual comprehensive financial report, as well as the auditor's written communication on internal controls. And with that, I'd be happy to ask for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the council? Councilmember Scuzzola? Any questions?
No question.
No question.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the chamber that wishes to speak on this item? And I don't see anybody online. There's one person. Let's see. So I will close the public discussion and bring it back to council for discussion and/or a motion. And maybe Councilmember Lopez, if you want to report on the Finance Subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, I'll just. And I want to thank our auditor, a representative from the team, for also being here and for the work. We had a productive meeting, asking some questions, delving into the finding and some of the best practices that were recommended and adopted based off the auditor's recommendations, and also delving into some questions about the different changes and balances and what that meant. So really appreciate the robust discussion. And I'm happy to, you know, get a good report back and recommend the staff recommendation.
Any other comments?
No, I'd just like to offer my thanks to the entire Finance Department for their continued excellent work and for, once again, maintaining our finances in appropriate levels of reserves. Thank you.
And I want to, I want to thank our auditor for being here in person tonight. We appreciate that.
And I'll thank Norrie as well, and as I stated, sad to be losing you, and that this will be your last meeting, but appreciate it.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion that the City Council accept the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two annual comprehensive financial report and auditor's written recommendation on internal control structure and the audit process as of today.
A second.
Great, thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lopez, second by Councilmember Fratato to approve the staff recommendation. May we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scuzzola?
Aye.
Councilmember Fratato?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Aye.
Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
So we have no unfinished business, and our last item is council committee reports. And Councilmember Scuzzola, how about if I start with you?
Sure thing. Unfortunately, due to catastrophic internet, I do not have any counsel of course while I'm at that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fratato? Vice Mayor Landry?
I have no committee reports, but I would like to report that I attended President of the County Board of Supervisors Susan Ellenberg's event on Friday night about birthing justice, and it was pretty shocking to find out the mortality rate of pregnant women and babies in the black community. It was a very informative event, and there was a panel discussion afterwards.
Councilmember Lopez?
I really wish I'd been able to make that. I understand it was in Prune Yard, which is great to have that locally.
Free popcorn and dinner?
I didn't know that. That's great. I had a few meetings of the Bay Area District, including some major updates to, well, fairly major updates to their administrative structure. And also had a committee meeting of the Mobile Sources Committee, which I actually chaired, normally vice chair, but in the absence of the chair, and really advocated for continued flexibility in the grants that they offered to public transit agencies, which we have made use of in Santa Clara County. So just making sure that we can continue to access those funds. Also had a meeting of the V. T. A., which mostly focused on findings for the part extension, but nothing major to report there.
Great, thank you. And I attended a meeting of the Friends of the Heritage Theater last week. And that's all I, that's the only activity I had. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.